All right, we'll call the city council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take your roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Marsette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Knutson.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right, comments and suggestions from citizens present. This is your opportunity to talk about any topic that involves a city that is not currently on the agenda. It's for residents only, and please, when you get up to speak, try to keep your comments brief, try not to repeat other people's comments, and I think that's it. Does anybody have a comment?
Okay. I thought I'd go first this time. I'm Mary Claire Olson-Potter, President of the Hudson Chamber. So I just wanted to thank you all and just give you a quick update on the Spirit of St. Croix event. We welcomed over 9,000 attendees to that event that weekend. So we had some, a few little weather things, but that didn't stop anyone from coming out. And I talked to several businesses who said that they had increased business that weekend because of the event. That's what this is all about, is economic development and helping to keep the businesses and restaurants busy. So I did want to give a special thank you to a number of people, Deb Andrews, Becky, Karen, and Heidi, for helping us get all the documents together that we needed and getting everything signed and dotted. And a special thank you to the Public Works Department, especially Jeremy and JJ. We clearly cannot do this event without them and their great leader, Mike Maraz. But they're there before the festival, they're after the festival, they're with us throughout the whole weekend, and also the Police Department, too, keeping everyone safe. So it was a great weekend, and I hope some of you were able to come out and enjoy it. And now we're just gearing up for everything holiday. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Claire. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Public hearing for partial discontinuance requests at 11th Street, generally between, or located between 1217 11th Street and 1208 11th Street, Stephen and Terry Wilcox. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to speak on this subject if you'd like. Same thing, try to keep your comments brief, and, but this is your opportunity to express your opinion on this particular issue. Is there anyone here that has a comment? Anyone here like to comment? Anyone here like to comment?
Moves to close the public hearing.
Second. Got a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, public hearing is closed. Discussion of possible action on Resolution 19-22 to partially discontinue a portion of public right of way on 11th Street, generally located between 1217 11th Street and 1208 11th Street, Stephen and Terry Wilcox.
Move to adopt Resolution 19-22.
Second. Got a motion, second to adopt. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Consent agenda?
Approve the claims in the amount of $2,610,822.08. Approve the meeting minutes from the September 19th, 2022, regular council meeting. Approve the final development plans for a building expansion on 1101 Carmichael Road, St. Croix County Government Center. Approve taxi license and taxicab driver for essential transportation with contingencies. Approve the establishment of a water main easement at 1101 Carmichael Road, St. Croix County Government Center. Approve a contract with Cedar Corporation for the City of Hudson zoning code update. Approve the disbandment of the ad hoc zoning code proposal, RFP review committee.
A move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve consent agenda. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. Discussion of possible action on shared transit service creation.
So we wanted to provide an update to the council on this issue. As you know, it's something we started, honestly, last, late last year, as far as getting things moving again. The council signing off on the required update to our transit study, which is a requirement to apply for any sort of state or federal funding to provide a transit service. So we did approve working with the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and we do have a representative from the commission on Zoom that's going to give a brief presentation about the study update and things like that in just a minute. I just wanted to touch base a little bit. As you can see, the process is different than what we anticipated when this started. We had in March of 2020, a study that was done by the Regional Planning Commission that was focusing on more of an elderly-disabled transit system. It had, as I mentioned in my memo on that last page, a timeline for things. Now that we had to do the update, the Planning Commission got much more detailed, the review and things, and kind of what we found out is basically, no one with the state has actually helped start a new transit system. It's probably been 10 years at least since the city has done this. So it's a new process for everyone, and we're learning a lot about it. And one of the, you know, unfortunately, the major issues with it is that the state process now dictates that we have to basically give them notice in January that we want to start. They'll go through their whole process, figure out funding, all that stuff, and then we can start the following January. Very different from what that original timeline was, which was basically, you say, okay, in August, and by October, November, you're good. You've got funding, you're up and running. So that's one of the major changes with it. Obviously, when we found out about this change, we've been working very hard to figure out an interim solution. We've contacting, we've contacted neighboring providers, we've contacted other, other providers that provide more like an Uber, Lyft sort of service, things like that. And we're actually now working directly with, who we assume would be the contractor that gets awarded the service, because they get all the services around here. So we're assuming that they would also have ours as well. We're actually trying to work directly with them on the interim about what we can possibly do and things like that. So while to be able to access the full state and federal funding has now clearly delayed this process, we hope that there's other options that we can, that we can utilize to have an interim service up and running sooner than that, to try to be more in line with what I anticipated our schedule would be. So that's kind of where we're at with everything. I think the good thing would be to let Edwin kind of give a rundown, and then we can answer any council questions that we might have about the whole process. Edwin, are you ready to go through it?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much for having me this evening. Can you all hear me well?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay. So the transit feasibility study that we're doing this year was an extension of the one that was done two years ago by the Regional Planning Commission. That one focused exclusively on handicapped and elderly. This new one, after talking with the city, we made some assumptions that we would be looking at a service that would include all riders. So the objective of what we were doing this year was to estimate the ridership for the general public shared ride taxi service, and update the estimated expenses and the grant resources available, because the grant funding shifts if you're not doing exclusively handicapped and elderly. It also expands population, so you have to look at the ridership again. And then there's also the expense numbers that were given back in 2020 need to be updated because of the extensive inflation that we've seen over the last couple of years. So the assumptions were, be for all passengers, that it would use a shared ride taxi model like River Falls and New Richmond. The service would operate from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. It was on-demand up to the system capacity, which means that rides can be scheduled on the same day if the capacity of the system allows that. It would operate within the city limits and up to five miles from the city limits. One end of each trip would need to be in the city. There'd be a base fare for travel between two points within the city, and then there'd be discounted fares available for elderly, K through 12 students, and those with disabilities. Travel outside the city limits, there'd be the base fare plus an additional per mile surcharge. It'd be operated by a contracted provider rather than by the city itself, beginning with two or three accessible vehicles owned and leased by, owned by and leased from the city, and that the service would start in 2024. We went through and, with the change in the geographic reach and the population, we went back and provided mapping for groups that have a tendency to use transit more than the average person, which would be the elderly, those with a disability, those with zero vehicles in the house, and then lower-income households. We also updated all this information to the 2020 census information, rather than the ACS, the American Community Survey information that had been used previously. We looked at the peer community services. We narrowed the peer group a little bit from the last, because there were a couple of us outliers in the last peer group that was looked at. So we looked at New Richmond, Chippewa Falls, and River Falls for information about the service area, the number of rides per population, hours of operation, just a lot of service details, to try and get an estimate of what it would look like in, in Hudson. So we, the number of vehicles is somewhat of a limiting factor for the number of rides you would have. For instance, Chippewa Falls has eight shared ride taxi vehicles on the street that are available, and the service hour is a little bit different than some of the others. So as, as you can see in the full report that was distributed with the package for the meeting, the, we came up with some numbers for the estimate for what Hudson service would look like, and then, then we looked at expenses, and there's capital expenses, which are the vehicle purchases. There've been some challenges in the last couple of years with minivan availability. It's gone along with a lot of supply chain shortages, and the, the very sharp increase in the cost of new vehicles. Nobody was willing to commit to a state contract, which is how these vans would normally be purchased, because they weren't sure that by the end of the contract, which might have been 15 to 18 months out from the bid, that they would still be able to provide vehicles at that price. The market's settling down a little bit, but the pricing's still a little up in the air. It sounds like the state will have a contract very shortly. The last vans that were purchased for the Chippewa Falls service were $39,000 apiece. Looks like the new pricing's going to be between $55,000 and $60,000 for basically the same vans. Then you also have operating expenses, does not include any, and in this, for this exercise, none of the administrative costs were, were included in that, because after talking with the city staff, it sounded like that would be taken on internally with current staff. So for operating expenses, the hourly rate, we ramped that up to reflect what we thought would be reasonable for 2024. It's about 15% higher than the highest that we were seeing for 2022, and since we saw an 8.3 increase in the CPIU this year, which affects some of the rolling contracts for some of these services, 15% seemed about right. The cost of, so we came up with a cost per service hour of $39.50 per hour, and that would take the annual operating expenses to about 3,060, I'm sorry, 360,000. Then we looked at revenue sources. Fares are always a very large source of revenue for a program, and the suggestion in the report is that we go in at a higher fare rate than the other systems have right now. It's difficult to raise fares after you set them, and I imagine that the other systems would have raised fares if they could, and in view of all of the transportation inflationary pressure we've seen. Base fare of 350 for a one-way trip within the city, end-to-end within the city, and then the discounted fare would be 250, and then the out-of-town surcharge per mile would be 250 for this exercise. That's, that's a variable that's not actually going to make too much difference in the fare revenue. Then there's also state and federal grants, with the change to a public service for the transit. It changes from the 5310 formula grants that were in the last program to the 5311 formula grants for rural areas. Those normally cover 80% of the capital expense. That's a little bit competitive, so those funds aren't always available, and then 50% of operating funds. Then the Wisconsin 8520 mass transit operating assistance usually takes between 15 and 25%. Over the last three years, there's been a much higher percentage that's been covered by state funding, because of the COVID funding that was available, the CARES Act and ARPA funding, but the anticipation is that those won't be available, and so it would go back to a more normal funding source. There's also a little bit of a twist in that if Hudson becomes part of the Minneapolis-St. Paul urbanized areas, when they announced urbanized areas later this year, that would change the funding sources, and that would go to a, an urban funding source, the 5307. But it's, it's, it can't be told right now if that's going to happen or not. Then lastly, another revenue source is local match, and that's usually 10 to 20% of the total operating expenses and 20% of capital expenses. There are some restrictions on where those funds can come from, and the other federal funding sources normally can't be used for that, but if it's, if it's locally developed money, or some, some services are running with donations from private industry, and those would all be acceptable. So there's, in the packet, there's a sample operations budget, which shows the 358,660 cost minus the 95,000 fare revenue, which leaves an operating deficit of about $263,000. And federal grants and state grants would take the local share down to about 65,000. So that would be about 18% of the total operating expenses. There's some questions about governance. A transit commission could be formed. I know that Chippewa Falls has one. I do not believe that either River Falls or New Richmond has one, or it can be done through direct oversight by city department staff. Then there's some administrative tasks. There's a fairly extensive list in the report on what those tasks would be. And so then we get to the next steps for, if the council were to decide to pursue this for a launch in 2024, there's a schedule of tasks and timing for that in the, near the end of that report. And as Aaron pointed out, sort of a hard deadline would be letting the state know by January 15th of 2023 that you intended to launch a program in January of 2024. And there's been some discussion that the RPC might continue to support this effort if the city decides to move forward on it, and Aaron can probably give you more details on that. So I jammed an awful lot of information in there in a short amount of time, but would anybody like me to go into more depth on any of that, or do you have any questions?
Anybody?
I've got some questions. So did the city apply for any grants this year?
Would you like to answer that, Aaron, or I will?
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, the answer is no, we didn't apply for any grants this year, because we can't. With the, with the state funding process, we're not allowed to apply at this point.
So is this a new law, or is this a new executive order, or how is, what was the process for making the change?
This is a regulation from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. It was, I do not know when it went into effect, but I was well down the path of talking to WISDOT about this before someone pointed out that we were talking in April, and the deadline to let them know had been January 15th. And pointed out, it's buried in one of their groups of regulations for public transit, and it wasn't, I'd, I'd never looked into launching a service here in Wisconsin before, and so, and nobody had brought it up to me in the discussions prior to that, when I'd been talking with WISDOT.
So is this a longstanding rule, then, that they've had, that you just weren't aware of?
I don't know how long it's been. I sort of got the impression from talking with the folks that they were not aware of it until they started digging into some of the regulations around, to answer some of the questions that I was putting to them. Actually, we didn't start the process, the funding for W, for the RPC's part of this didn't actually become available until the beginning of the year, and so I, we weren't working on it in time, actually, to have done that, even if it had been obvious from the very beginning that we had to hit, hit that deadline, so.
Edwin, a few questions, if I may. When you said we hadn't begun working on that, who's "we"?
Oh, the RPC. This, I think that last year, in December, or possibly even in January, the council approved the contract, the work order with the Regional Planning Commission to do this update to the transit feasibility study. So when I say "we," I mean the Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you. Also, I know in our March meeting, Aaron had also mentioned the urban funding source as well, and at that point, you know, hope that we would have heard back by now. Do you have a sense on when we'll find out what area Hudson falls in?
Yes. The, I think it's the Federal Highway Administration, I believe, is the one that makes the final determination on that, and right now, the expected release date for the new urbanized areas is in November of this year.
Okay, so that's when we should get a sense where we will be trying to get our grant funds from. Is that correct?
Yes, although there's a, once those urbanized areas are released, there's a timeframe with which the new, the new urbanized areas have to be included in the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the metro council for MSP. And so it might not have been finalized by the time that the funding would have to be put in place for the first year, even if Hudson was to be included in the urbanized area in the future.
So that would potentially be an even bigger delay for us?
It should not be a delay. The, the states and the MPOs are required to work together, and the intention is to seamlessly expand the urbanized areas without a disruption in funding.
And then I'm just wondering, Edwin, it was said that there hasn't been any other communities in Wisconsin that have done this in the past 10 years. I'm wondering a few things. Our, is our community late to the game, and, or is it more that our state representatives aren't seeing this as a priority?
I'm not sure that's, that I have a strong opinion one way or the other on, on that. I think that there's a significant number of cities the size of Hudson that do not provide transit services, so late to the game. There's certainly many places that have had this in place for 10 to 15 years, but it's, I don't, I think there's a new push for it with energy prices and particularly transportation expenses getting so high, the aging population in a lot of places outside large cities. I think that the, there's a growing recognition that services and transportation services particularly have to be provided to them. There's a lot of studies that show that health outcomes for the elderly are much better if there's transit available to them, because they tend to get better follow-up care. Same's true for low-income residents. So I, I don't really have an opinion about whether you're late to the game. I think that it's a good thing to be thinking about for all the reasons that I just went through.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions. Is there an advantage to being part of the urban area, or is, or are we better off staying where we're at?
That varies by the year and sometimes by the administration. Traditionally, larger cities, urban areas have gotten a higher percentage of transit funding, and so that might be an advantage there. There's been a focus over the last five years or so to increase funding in rural areas, and by rural, I mean less than 50,000 population. That's the way the federal government defines it. So it's unclear to me exactly what the repercussions of that would be for the percentage funding. I do know that I, I act as the administrator for Chippewa Falls, and because it's, Chippewa Falls is in the Eau Claire urbanized area, we have 5307 funding in Chippewa Falls, and the numbers have looked fairly similar, as far as the percentage that's been funded through grant funding. So, but I, I can't ask, answer that specifically, because the regulations change from year to year. The good news is, it might, across the board, there might be more funding, because the Inflation Reduction Act and the BIL, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, both had significant increases in funding for transit. And so I didn't take any of that into account, since it's not clear how all that will roll down, but I would not be surprised at all if the local share for a service came down in the next two or three years, as the funding, how those funds are expended becomes a little bit clearer.
Why is Chippewa Falls so different from the Hudson proposal? Do they have a larger percentage of people in poverty, or a larger percentage of households without vehicles, or a higher senior population?
You mean the difference in the number of vehicles they have available?
Yeah, they've got eight, and, you know, they've got a significant number more rides than what's proposed for Hudson?
I think that some of that was a determination by the city a few years ago. I don't know exactly when they went to that number of vehicles. And the number of vehicles will limit the number of rides. So two, two vehicles in a city the size of Hudson will reduce the number of times that somebody can call up and get a ride that day, because there just won't be that capacity in the, in the shared ride minivans. So I think that they made a determination, I think 10 years ago or more, that that was something they were willing to invest more in to increase the service. They are also adjacent to Eau Claire, as I've said earlier, and Eau Claire has a fairly extensive fixed route system with large buses, and I think that it might have been more of an expectation in the Chippewa Valley that transit service would be provided.
Okay, so you'd have a lot of rides to drop people off in, in Eau Claire to catch a bus somewhere into Eau Claire?
Sadly, they're not connected. There's, you can get real close, but they, they don't actually inter, interoperate right at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question, thank you. If, if we are determined to be a part of the urban group and become the 5307, what process needs to take place? Could you explain that again a little bit, what needs to happen before we can start applying for the grant?
The, well, the, the good news is that the January 15th deadline doesn't change at all, and so if there's details to be worked out there, it falls to the Department of Transportation for Wisconsin, the Department of Transportation for Minnesota, and then the Metropolitan Council and the City of Hudson to work together to clarify that. Now, the money that, it's possible that the money that would have flowed through the WISDOT would actually then be shifted over and flow through Minnesota Department of Transportation and down through the MPO to Hudson. But that's, there's a fair amount of time to get those details worked out, because the real trick is to, to let WISDOT know by January 15th that you intend to do that. So, and it's a little unclear how the interstate expansion of an urbanized area is a little bit more complicated than it would be if it was all inside a state, obviously, because there's just another player in, on the field.
Sure.
So I have a couple of quick questions. You may have mentioned it. Who owns the and maintains the vehicles? Is that the city?
The city would own the vehicles. They'd lease them, usually for a dollar for the entire fleet, and then the operator is responsible for maintenance and fuel and, I mean, you can write the proposal any way you want, but the most common way I've seen is you lease all the vehicles for a dollar, and then the provider is responsible for maintenance.
Okay. And then for a, for an admin to run this program in a, in a similar city, what, what kind of costs? I know we said we'd absorb that or try to work it in, but like, what, what would that be, if that was a new position that we're bringing on?
The only example I have is myself with Chippewa, and we have a, an agreement that caps the potential outlay at $40,000 a year. We don't, we don't hit that in a normal year, but there is a, every third year, the FTA does a triennial review of all federally-funded transit services, and that's fairly time-intensive. And so- transit services, and that's fairly time-intensive. And so the, that started three or four years ago, before I was on board. And what happened was that the, the staff that was with Chippewa Falls that had been managing that, it was about a, I think it was about a FTE that they had dedicated to that, both left at the same time. And so they needed somebody that had some transportation experience. Ann Shell, who was working with the RPC prior to me coming, had a fair amount of transportation or transit experience. And so they asked if we could do that. And they've just maintained that relationship.
So our plan is, is River Falls and New Richmond kind of split it up among a few different staff people. So Roz looked up when you had that conversation. Because we haven't determined how that's going to be split up yet. But we assume based on knowing what their operations are and how ours would look, that we would, we would split some of the duties up among a few different staff people for the admin side. But as Edwin said, when it gets to the complicated side of things, we probably would have to contract with, like an Edwin, to do that side of it. So when we have to do these biannual, whatever he's talking about, every few years, you gotta do something, whatever. Those are ones that we'd probably farm out. The day-to-day, every-year ones, we feel fairly confident that we can hopefully handle it internally. But that'll have to work out as we go.
If, if we do discover that we're part of the metropolitan, are we able to still work with Edwin? Or would we work with some, okay?
No, we could still continue to work with Edwin.
Anybody else?
Realistically, a lead time for those vans, though, in my industry, you can't get them. So even if we fund it for next year through us, I don't see us getting our vans.
So what we've been looking at with that is that we actually had a few of our local potential providers that had some vans that they were using before COVID, that they stopped using, that we were considering trying to partner with. And then also our partners in the area as well have their vehicles that we were hoping that we could, you know, potentially be able to do some co-leasing and utilize some existing vehicles that are already in operation in our area. So that was our goal with it, because you're right. We, we weren't anticipating to be able to actually buy our own. We were gonna have to try to get creative and partner with other entities that have vehicles like that to use and, and try to, you know, take advantage of maximizing the use of these vehicles that are already on the system. So that was our, we're still working through that right now, and we're hoping we can still try to figure that out.
Yeah, there's significant lead times, huge, over a year on some cases, so.
Other than citizens being able to watch our meeting here and hear where things are at, this is different than what had been said in the past. I'm just wondering how we're going to do our best to get this message out to the public. I know a lot of folks were really hopeful, and there had been some indication that it could happen. So how are we going to make sure that folks get the message?
I hope there's a really good newspaper article about it that helps to get it out there on their sites and things. But we think for us right now, that's the best way to get it out there. So. Yep. And then also, the mayor's correct. We'll have it, we'll have an update in our next newsletter as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Edwin, thank you so much. That was a lot of information.
Yep. And like I said, almost everything I said here is contained in the report. It's, I tried to make it a little less dense and a little more readable, but with all the information in it. So if anybody ever has any questions, feel free to contact me, and I will do my best to answer them.
Sounds good. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Was there any action?
There was. So, so my request would be is, you know, the council's heard the update. Clearly, our timing is not what we expected, but we still feel it's important to keep moving forward. So at this point, what we, what we're asking for is that a motion to approve moving forward with notifying the state of our intent to start a shared ride transit service as soon as possible, and authorize staff to continue to look for interim options until we know for sure what we can do, basically. So the wording's in there. That's basically what we're looking for.
So moved.
I'll second that.
You got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on public hearing related to diversity committee.
I think this is me. I, at our last council meeting, after a public comment, it was recommended that we do a public hearing to get feedback regarding the diversity committee. And I am asking our council to consider a public hearing for our community members, specifically on the topic of reinstating the diversity committee.
What do you hope to gain through the public hearing that you haven't probably already heard?
I think it would be helpful for other council members to hear the similar kind of comments that I've been getting. I have received emails, phone calls, and comments from citizens who would, who are disappointed that the committee's no longer here. I think we heard from residents at the last meeting that we had just begun the process. And I don't know what it would hurt to open it up, to hear from citizens on that. And perhaps, perhaps folks won't show up, and then that will be the message. Or perhaps, community members will show up with strong opinions and will give us something to think about.
Well, ideally, we would like to have solutions to the potential problem. And not a, a public hearing where it's, you said this, you said that, complaining, downgrading our community, our citizen, the city, the people in the past, et cetera.
I think the, the counterpoint to that was, in the past meetings, it was said that we were looking for a problem where there wasn't a problem. And so that, and I think what we're hearing from citizens is that there is a problem, and we have a responsibility to hear them out and, and hear their suggestions and opinions. After all, it's them that we're representing. It's their voices that we're bringing forward.
But being productive, we want a solution. We want ideas. And that's what I would come to the table with, besides a public hearing. So that's just kind of my thought. I'm not opposed to a public hearing. I'm just saying, we need to find a solution. We don't need a session of grapes.
Right. Could it be a working meeting? So then we would listen to suggestions and then share ideas amongst ourselves on potential action items for us to consider?
I don't know. I think that's a good idea. I don't, no problem with that. No problem with anything, as long as everybody brings a solution to this.
Are you suggesting a public hearing and then addressing the topic at the same meeting? I mean, is that allowed? I was just looking.
It'd have to be a special meeting.
I mean, we can, you can have it on the agenda. I mean, so even a regular meeting, you can have a public hearing, like we did tonight, and then you close a public hearing, and then the next agenda item is addressing that item. So you can have them on the same agenda. We do it pretty much every public hearing.
I would just like to see a working meeting like you suggest. I think that'd be more helpful.
My suggestion, I think, is having a proposal on the table. I think it's easier for us to, you know, just saying, let's have a public hearing to discuss a topic, is, probably doesn't move things forward as much as having a real suggestion that people can work for. For example, the City of Hudson has zero tolerance for discrimination, or something like that, that, because one of the things that's been my concern is, are we addressing greater problems in society and, you know, unfortunate incidences, things that happen in our community and in any community? Perhaps there are misunderstandings. Perhaps there is underlying problems. But what can we, as a city, really do? And that's where, you know, I think, and again, I trust our administration, to be, you know, following federally mandated hiring guidelines, and that our staff also follows those. So I, I feel like it's difficult to know how a city committee is going to address the issues of society. And there are issues. I don't dispute that. I don't dispute that, or that some people feel less, harder to find their place here in town. It is a small town, so it takes a while to get engaged and to find your spot, people that you get along with, that you know that you have common interests. And so that's why I had said before, that I think as a community, we can support and highlight those nonprofits, our churches, the Y, the PIPs, all the organizations that do help, you know, provide those environments for people. And really, what can the city do, other than to ensure that we're following federally mandated guidelines anyway? So that's my feedback on just having a general public hearing, is I think if there was a more specific topic, that gives us something then to actually vote on or discuss. But that's just my feedback.
Well, and I kind of echo some of that, too. Not that I can predict what the future looks like, but if we do have this, you know, public hearing, and, you know, you hear from people that are disappointed that we put a stop to it. I've talked to people that are, you know, run the whole gamut. Some people are still interested in moving down the road. Some people are thinking that, again, the city's maybe not the, the tool to use for that. But again, if we have a public hearing, and we have a handful of people that are, you know, I, I want the diversity committee to reformulate, and we have some people that say, I don't think it's necessary, or that's not the right path, we're just gonna have a pile of opinions, and we're gonna be right where we are today. So whether it be something on the table to vote on, or something more than just talking about it, and what individual responses at that meeting would be, it, it does have to accomplish something. We have to measure it. We have to measure if we're on the right track or wrong track, so.
I also want to repeat my concern that I stated before, that I think the, the people that step forward to serve were very good-intentioned and really care about issues that they understand in their own life or recognize in other people's lives and wanted to serve. But I do think making an official governmental body and asking people to serve on that puts them in a pretty vulnerable spot. And maybe some people didn't realize that, or might not appreciate it, that they would be subject to open meeting laws. They would be subject to open records, information requests. So for example, if someone made, did an open records request for any email that had the word diversity in it, they would be forced to comply. And that would be emails on their own private devices. And I just think that's, that's one of the things, I think it's, it's a helpful idea, but I'm not, again, I don't necessarily, I'm not convinced that the city is the right, the city government is the right avenue to address these issues. So, thank you.
I think I said before, too, that, you know, coming up with some sort of proposal, you know, we looked at that, we formed the diversity committee, we asked them to, to define it, and what that role is. And I, I feel like that's this body's duty, is to sort of form what, what we want out of it. And so I, I kind of agree with, with both sides, if you will. I, I like the idea of public input in public hearing and, you know, kind of talking to that, you know, is there a need for it in hearing that? But doing it without any structure does kind of throw everything up in the air. So I don't know if there's something that we can put together.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if that is the first step. If the first step is getting public opinion, and then based on that public opinion, making an action plan from that. Because perhaps, you know, folks won't show up, and, and it won't be an issue. But I, I do know I have heard from several that are very disappointed. And I hadn't thought about the public hearing, and it was a suggestion from a, a citizen, and I thought it might be a good starting point for us.
I'd like to see a public hearing. And something else that I think that we need to consider is that when we put together the diversity committee, we wanted people who had diverse backgrounds. And I still believe that that's a good idea. But I think one of the things that need to be looked at would be, people who have diverse backgrounds often are carrying a lot of burden in dealing with issues. And how can we help and ask people who are, you know, for example, not people of color, to step up and do some of this, so that we don't have to further burden people who are, are already dealing with these issues?
I think that brings up the sensitivity of what Joy was just saying, that if something happens, their public request, there's a lot of information, probably private information that could be exposed, that maybe they don't want, they're already dealing with stuff. Why would they want to deal with an open record request on something that is their personal issue that gets into sticky?
I guess I'd like to ask Nick about that. If somebody just made a request for anything that had the word diversity in it, would a committee member have to provide any of their personal correspondence or something like that, if it didn't have anything to do with the committee?
Well, it, it depends on what the request specifically states and, and what's, what's being asked for. Certainly, you know, public email accounts, city email accounts are subject to disclosure. But private email accounts can also be subject to disclosure if those private email accounts are being used to conduct public business. And so it, it, it's not as simple as, as saying that a records request for public documents only requires a search of, of public systems. If those individual committee members, first of all, are functioning as a public body, and then secondarily are conducting public business but with a private email address, they could well be subject to disclosure requirements under the open records law.
Anybody else?
So I guess at this point, maybe I'll put a motion out there and see if it moves forward, and we'll go from there. I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing to discuss the continuance of a diversity committee, followed up by a working meeting to develop an action plan based on the results of the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on approving Resolution 22-22, initial resolution of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,905,000 for a community development project in TID number five, Tax Increment District number five.
Perfect. Good evening, council. We're gonna get set up here. I got Sean Lentz with Ellers to walk us through this, because he's so much more eloquent than I am. Ah, there it is.
Yes. Great. Good evening, mayor and council. I've got a brief presentation to go over the proposed financing. And please feel free to interrupt me with any questions as we move through the material. Just get us on the second slide here. Okay. So a number of years back, I think it was 2018, the city entered into a development agreement for the redevelopment of the Dog Track site with St. Croy Meadows LLC. And the concept was that, at the outset, there was a lot of initial cost to clean up the site. And then there's also significant cost to provide infrastructure so that new businesses and homes and the like could locate there. So the development agreement, and I know that you're going through the process of making some amendments to this agreement, things have certainly changed since it was originally put into place. But the overall concept of the proposed amended agreement is, is still basically in the same form. The numbers have changed a little bit. But what the agreement had called for was originally that the St. Croy Meadows Group would put in the street and utility improvements to make the property much more desirable for redevelopment. And the second element of the agreement was that there had to be the creation of 72 million in new tax base in Tax Increment District number five. So the city wanted to get the improvements done, and they also wanted to get new development in the Tax Increment District. in the tax increment district, because it's that new development that allows you to pay for those expenditures, the street and utility expenditures initially. So if both of those thresholds were met, the project gets completed to the city satisfaction, and new development creating new tax base in the amount of at least 72 million, then at that point, the city would do a tax increment grant to reimburse St. Croix Meadows LLC for that initial outlay of expenditures to put that street and utility work in. So we are currently at that point now where they have achieved the 72 million, and the city has accepted the street and utility improvements. So that brings us today with the grant itself. Before I move on, is any questions on that? I know not everyone was on the council that's here today at that point, but if there's any questions about tax increment districts or that development agreement, I'm sure there's a group here, the group that was involved originally, we could try to answer any questions on that. Okay, I'll keep moving. So what we have looked at preliminarily then is a financing for approximately, as the mayor stated, 3,905,000, which will provide the funding and any costs associated with the debt to pay that 3.8 million dollar incentive cost to St. Croix Meadows. And then what you'll see on the chart I have here is the proposed repayment schedule for that debt over the next 20 years with interest rates that are about a half a percent above current market conditions. So the blended interest rate on this would be about four and a half percent. The current market for this type of debt from a highly rated city like Hudson is closer to 4% right now. You'll see that I broke the payments down into, you have the annual total payment in purple, which is around 290, 295,000 a year. Then I broke it down into St. Croix Meadows portion and the Phillips portion. Why did we do that? Well, the agreement, there's other agreements that the city has in place currently. And the way it works out, we have it set up that the city can pull revenues from, if you divide the TIF in half, we can pull revenues from the Phillips side to pay this debt before we pay them another incentive that we have with them. And the same with the St. Croix Meadows side. We can pull first to make this annual debt service payment, and then after that, there can be revenues that can flow to St. Croix Meadows for other incentives that the city agreed to back in the original creation of TID number five. Just to give you a sense, the total payment here, just under $300,000 a year to pay this back in 20 years. Currently, I think we're estimating for next year's tax increment district collection that TID number five will probably generate, you know, somewhere close to a million dollars in revenue. So just to give you a sense, the district is off to a very good start. It's very early in its life and generating a lot of new tax revenue that's going to pay this expense as well as other costs that were initially agreed to when the district was created a couple of years ago. Now, the process moving forward, tonight's the first step to review the finance plan with the council, and state statutes require that an initial resolution be approved for the financing, and the mayor did read that. There's a second resolution just setting out a little bit more details of the sale. And if you look forward on the timeline between now and November 7th, which would be the date that we would solicit competitive proposals for the financing in the morning, and then bring that back for the council's review that evening, that's when you'd actually see the proposal and either agree to it or not agree to it at that point. In between, a couple of things will take place. We'll do and work with city staff on all of the documentation for the bond issue, and then we'll also do, which is typically a preliminary official statements, very much like a prospectus for a stock or a mutual fund. And we will also go through the process of updating the city's outstanding bond rating. Right now, the city has a AA2 rating, AAA is the best, AA1 and AA2. So you're, as you know, you already have a very strong rating, and our hope is to at least affirm that rating or potentially improve it in that process. Yes, mayor?
Sean, I know that a couple of years ago, you had said that we had the highest rating that we could get based upon our size and other circumstances. So is that still the case? Do we have the highest rating that we could get, or is it possible still to get a higher rating?
Yeah, I think, mayor, what we had talked about is that I felt strongly that the things you have control over, you've done a real good job, so your finances, the wealth of the communities is a strength, the tax base of the communities. But one of the areas that is just a reality with the ratings is they compare you with communities all around the country, and AA2 communities going up to a AA1, not all of them, but a lot of them have a larger tax base than Hudson currently has. And some, I'll go back and get that report so we can, all the council members can see what that most recent rating report is. But one of the big, I guess, obstacles to growing, or to going to that better rating was the, just the raw size of Hudson, and that continues to improve, though. As you know, the tax base continues, the equalized value, the community continues to grow. So, yeah, big picture, I think you are doing a lot of things that you have direct control over to be recognized as a strong AA2 credit. Getting to that AA1, it does lead to more challenges that some of them are just not in the city's direct control.
Okay.
So we would go through that process between now and November 7th. And then, again, as I'd mentioned, we'd be here for the results to review on the 7th, and then early in December would be the closing date, and at that point, the funds would be in hand that the city could make that grant. Now, I think in between, the other issue that we wanted to get this started is we need to have both parties finalize the amendment to the original development agreement with St. Croix Meadows, and I believe that will be on the agenda probably later this month, I'm guessing, at this point. But Mike might know a little bit more about that. And if by chance something happens with that, we can stop the process or delay the process if necessary. I don't expect it, but if something came up on that issue, we could certainly change course if we needed to. So with that, I guess I'd put it back to the council and mayor, if you have any questions or Mike has anything to add.
Sean, what are we looking at at an interest rate right now?
The projections I had, mayor, had interest rates about a half a percent above current market conditions. So the blended rate of what we show a couple of slides ago was 4.5%. What we're seeing from sales that we saw last week from very similar credits to Hudson was interest rates closer to 4%. So that we've estimated a little conservative here, not knowing where the next month has, but that's a sense of where the market is currently.
So, and I can't remember, is the Fed meeting again to?
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to meet before the 7th. I'll look at that and get back to you with the exact date.
I mean, it's going to be what it's going to be, right? But.
Yeah, our other issue is we, the process tonight begins what's called a 30-day publication and petition period, and we can't sell the debt until that 30-day period has run its course. And so by the time that runs, the November 7th meeting is really about as fast as you're going to be able to do it regardless. There's not much you could speed up, anyway.
So just to put things in perspective, what would happen to the interest rate if we, if our rating were to drop one level or two levels?
So if you got a worse rating?
Right.
Yeah, I think if you went from a AA2 to a AA3, which is the next one down, mayor, you're probably looking at 10 to 15 basis points in higher interest rates a year, two steps, probably 25 to 30 basis points in that range. As you get a little bit higher, it's maybe five to 10 better if we went to the AA1, and then AAA is in kind of its own category, that could be 20 basis points better to get up there. That's pretty difficult to get to that level, and as I'd mentioned, some of the factors that they put into the rating, the city just doesn't have direct control over.
Right, right. All right, thanks.
Bet.
Anybody? Everybody good? Is there a motion?
I'll move to suspend the rules. Do we suspend on this one?
No.
No. All right. Move to adopt resolution 22-22.
A second. Got a motion, a second to adopt. Any further discussion? I can't, so did we change, is this a roll call still, or?
Uh-uh.
No, we don't have to do that? All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action approving resolution 23-22, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation community development bond series 2022A of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin. We have a motion?
Move to adopt resolution 23-22.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
You're looking at me.
I am, I am looking at you.
Well, as you all know, this is my last meeting with the City of Hudson, District 2. I wrote all this stuff down, and I don't know if I'm even going to read it. No, I probably will, but I just wanted to start out by saying it's been an honor and pleasure serving with you and council members before. You know, I've been in this seat for the last seven years. And in that time, we've done some really big things. New and reconditioned roadways, new fire station, new downtown parking initiative, new EMS service, a new solution to the vacant dog track that we just approved on selling of bonds. But so I just wanted to say, though, that none of these initiatives could have been done without a top-notch staff. And when I say staff, I started writing names down, and I'm like, oh, I forgot this person, I forgot this person. So just going to say staff, okay? I think all of you know who you are, right? You know, so many things get done in the city from an operational standpoint. Good deeds often go unseen. From snow plowing to maintaining the roadways and walkways, water delivery to waste treatment, from protecting the safety of our community to the emergency response of our citizens when our citizens are experiencing perhaps their worst day. To serving our community in other ways, all the way from the library to the River Channel cable. All of this is done often seamlessly and all too often done without a thanks. So I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to staff, both present and past. The staff and their well-being is what matters in our role as council. It took me a long time to see it, and part of my regret is not championing our staff's well-being in my role. I encourage this council to take a look at ways of commendation that could take place for our staff. There are more times people go over and beyond that are currently recognized. And again, that's a regret of mine in the seat that could have done more, maybe, recognition of staff. May not seem like a lot on the surface, but it could go a long way for the typical city employee. There's so many great things on the horizon for Hudson and so many challenges that lay before you as a council. And I really wish I could be a part of those conversations and be a part of those votes. Obviously, I had to make a hard decision for a major life change by moving to the East Coast. Sorry. Ultimately, you have to put family first, though, so. What I would like to leave you with are my thoughts of what will make the city even greater than it actually is currently. And it boils down to one word, in my opinion. Partnership. I challenge this council and future councils to make inroads in strong partnerships with organizations that are servicing our community in other ways, in other non-governmental ways. Get involved, get informed, find ways to work together and take the input, even if it's just that, taking the input, not necessarily taking action, right? Strengthen relationships with surrounding communities, find ways to partner on things that can strengthen the bonds within our community. So. Thanks for, I don't know, thanks for everything. Thanks for being beside me with making decisions. And again, huge hats off to all the staff and the staff leadership. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
How about a hug?
All right. Not going to hug, wait. A virtual hug to Joyce.
Well, then I won't say nothing nice.
Thank you, Bill. I'm sorry I'm not there to get a hug from you. But I do want to commend you on your, well, first of all, on your service to the city, but also on your decision to put your son first. That, it's sometimes very difficult to do that, but always worth the sacrifices.
Thank you, Joyce.
Yeah, Bill, your passion for the city and how you served the City of Hudson was infectious, and it was proof in the pudding during the tough time of COVID, when you put all the organizations together to help lead the needs in our community. So that is a huge thank you and congratulation on a well job leading that, on a job well done for that.
Thanks, just making sure that I wasn't infectious with my COVID.
But I do appreciate you, you know, looking at the emails before the meetings, dressing like me.
I got here first.
Bill, it was a real pleasure to have spent the last six years, six-plus years with you. You've always had my respect, you've always been very thoughtful in your approach to governance and to the service that you provide to your community. I think that's been great. I think you've made, been a good example to all the people in the community. I think Randy's point is especially true, and listening to what you were saying, the things that you were part of, that kind of got lost in that. You putting together the organization, service organizations here in town, and, I mean, truly for the first time, a clearinghouse, a database of all the service organizations and the work that they do, that was rather enlightening, you know? And so that was monumental, and that stands out above the rest, I think. And I'm glad Randy brought that up because it got lost in your conversation. But, you know, it's been great talking with you over the years, and especially, I know how difficult this decision was for you in talking with you over the last several months. Again, something to, that's worthy of a lot of respect, so. Stay in touch, and you will be missed, and thank you for the memories.
Thanks, I'll join via Zoom, maybe. Comments now. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.